Welcome to the City of Franklin Council. We're going to start off tonight with our meeting. First meeting is at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Resolution number 25R-43. A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Montrose Auto Group for the purchase of a 2025 Dodge Durango Pursuit V6 SUV for the fire department and declaring an emergency. I thought I saw the chief there.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you want to talk about that?
This vehicle, sure, I can talk about this. This vehicle replaces our 2011 Ford Explorer that has just over 98,000 miles on it. And it's used for EMS chase, as an EMS chase vehicle, and then also inspection uses it as well. So it was originally on the five-year plan to be replaced in 2024, and we pushed it back. And it did not get put on earlier this year because we were hoping to get to 25 with it. And it's just gotten to a point, the frame and the body have deteriorated to the point we need to do something with it now. That's why it wasn't on for this year as a capital improvement.
And the price does not look that bad even to me, and you know what a squish I am. It's $42,488.58.
Yes, we looked at the Dodge Durango and we also looked at the Ford Interceptor. We had a couple of Ford Interceptors already. And the Durango was actually a little over $5,000 less. So we figured that it was a good... We drove both. Both seemed adequate. They're both police package vehicles, so...
So you didn't contest with either one?
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions?
Do you know what the lead time is on this vehicle?
Pardon?
The lead time. Are we able to get this vehicle running before we soon?
Yes, they have... Montrose Ford has both of them on the lot. So that's how we were able to drive both. And they're both available.
What additional expenses will be incurred with this vehicle?
There's... Obviously, it has to have decal-ing and a light package. We're hoping to keep that to a minimum, to less than $10,000. I have an estimate already. It's $12,000. I'm hoping to whittle that down to below 10.
And that would include both, the lights and the decal?
That was just the light package alone, with the sirens, light bar, the strobe lights. So decal-ing, usually our decal package doesn't cost us more than about $1,500, $2,000, somewhere in there.
And the Ford Interceptor would need that as well?
What's the white knuckle package?
You know what? That's a good... That's a good... It has something to do...
I don't want to guide you.
Yeah. I'm thinking it has something to do with the police package. But I can't honestly tell you what it is.
You'll have to know sometime.
Now, the Ford has the three-liter EcoBoost. This Durango has a V6, so it doesn't have the Hemi motor that most of the Pursuit package vehicles have. But there again, for a fire department vehicle, we're not chasing people, so we don't need that extra horsepower.
The white knuckle is in the event. You have, let's say, a fifteen-and-a-half-year-old who's got his temps. It's on the passenger side.
I hate to bring this conversation down, but I believe the white knuckle package is just touch-up paint.
I thought it was way more exciting.
Exactly.
It sounds exciting.
Is there any possibility you were using the light kit that's on the existing car we're doing?
You know what? It's from... It's really from 2011. The technology is so old that it really isn't worth placing... Spending the money to place it on the new car. It's better to just package it out with all new... A new light bar and new strobes.
Does anyone have a problem with waiving this through? And that's what we're doing. How close can we say committee at 6:05?
The next meeting is at the laws and ordinance committee.
Open the laws and ordinance committee at 6:05 PM. Ordinance 25003. Ordinance submitted to the electors of the City of New Franklin a proposal to amend section 7.05, 7.06, and 7.07 of the charter declaring that this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon passage. Any questions?
Can I talk this one out last week?
So let's read the next one, the next meeting. Anybody got any questions? I don't.
Do you want to go ahead and vote on it tonight, or do you want to read again?
Well, the discussion last week, the last council meeting last week, was that a heading submitted to the board of elections before, now is that correct?
Yeah.
So today at 4:00, I think, was the deadline. So time is an emergency at this point. So we can do three readings.
I mean, do you want to table? How about the spots? Not much ready.
I'll just read it again.
Yeah, we'll read.
Okay.
So we're taking time on this for next... For November 2026?
I don't agree with the table.
Is that... My understanding, correct?
I... So passing it tonight doesn't benefit or hinder us? So we can have some more discussion on it if we want. Maybe somebody will reach out about it with this next meeting to make a decision on.
Okay, but then this would be for...
November 26.
November 26, so we'll be voting on that now for November 26. Okay, just real quick. If that's what we want to do, that's fine. We'll take time, we can vote on it. I do have a concern with voting on it this early for an election a year from now. We don't know what's going to be going on a year from now. We don't know who is going to be on council a year from now to do this. I would be more comfortable if we waited until May even, May or June, to give us time to do the three readings next summer before. So, I mean, it just... It just doesn't sit right. And I'm not talking about the resolution itself. You know how I feel about that. But just that going this, you know, a year and several months before the election, that would be on... I just... I have a concern with that. I think that we should wait. It's my thought. We should ask Mr. Coleman, who does the table, like we've done in the past, that you've suggested to do with different things in the past, and put a date on it, like we've done in the past. Put a date on it that would bring it back and bring it back up for a discussion for introduction on a specific date for, you know, the second meeting of May, or the first meeting of May, or whatever. I think would make more sense and let the council, whoever that comprises of, make the call at that time. Would be my thought. And if we decided to continue on with it at this time period, then we'll have to update section four of it where it says on or before August 5. So I just think it makes more sense to just table it until... Again, a specific date, so we don't forget about it, and bring it up. Would be my thoughts.
Do you want to do that, or do you want to wait another three minutes? Or do you need to go to the other?
We'll just talk about the next meeting.
Okay.
And maybe make a decision on what we're doing. Time's running out.
I'm going to close out the laws and ordinance committee at 6:09 PM.
The next committee is going to be community development. Mr. Schaefer?
Open a community development committee at 6:08. We have a second reading of resolution 25R-39. Resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with OHM advisors for design assistance of Park Trail project and declaring emergency. We'd asked Wyatt about the information from the school board, if they were willing, if they had something running from the board itself. Where are we standing, Mr. Mayor?
We are very close. We have an agreement in principle. The two attorneys have been exchanging back and forth memorandum of understanding. And it really will address two issues that we're doing over there at Sisler Park. One will be this, because a portion of this is the design work, the engineering work for the trail at Sisler Park. And this was possibly maybe a $250,000 project, but we learned that our service department could handle the bulk of that, but we still need the design and engineering. And we have a proposal from OHM for $38,500 to do that. So everything's go on this. In that sense, the Parks Commission supports this, and we're coming out of Parks budget. But Mr. Schaefer appropriately indicated, hey, we have something running for the school. So because a small portion of this trail will go behind the tennis courts, and that's school property. So in addition to that project, except and apart from that, we want to put restrooms over there. Requires an upgrade in the package plant that they have there. And we have an agreement in principle on that as well, that the cost of that, we're going to share. The school's envelope will accept the flow from the restrooms that we put in. And I think it's a win-win for both parties and for the community. So we're folding all that into one MOU. And we're down to where it's just the last tweak, but we didn't get it done in time. So I'll bring that to you two weeks from now.
If you also put something in about the existing sidewalk that happens to be owned by the tennis courts that's on the school front? Or does that need to be some separate?
Yeah. You talked about the sidewalk behind the... That's on... Behind the tennis courts, to the south of the tennis courts? I believe that was all handled when we did the initial... You know, when we put in the tennis courts. So this would all be prospective stuff. It'll allow us to use that property. And basically, let's say that, you know, we're... The verbiage is that we install it, we maintain it, that section of the walking trail. As it relates to the restrooms, in advance of that, I'll tell you that we install the restrooms, we maintain the restrooms. The school, like the public, will have use of the restrooms. As it relates to the package plant, once we do the upgrades, that's all the district's responsibility. We have no further responsibility for the package plant, once we get past the initial renovation on that. So if we can kick that over two more weeks, that would be good.
Will we pay for that sometime? All right, well, ask your time, and we'll close with the community development committee at 6:00. I heard with that, I'd like to officially call up order, the City of New Franklin Council meeting for Wednesday, August 6, 2025, literally showing the question.
I'd like to leave.
It's to the flag of the United States of America and choose a republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cox?
President.
Mr. Schaefer?
President.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mr. Stiles?
Present.
Mr. Wolf?
Present.
Mr. Aman?
Present.
Do I have a motion for approval in minutes for the regularly scheduled meeting on July 16th, if you have any contact?
All the motions.
Second, the first and the second, hold.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Next up is public comments. If you would, please address council. Give us your name, address, and you have four minutes to give us your comments. Anything?
Hello again. Mike Hoffman, 4123 Muncher Avenue. I'd rather you continue voting on Wednesday night, but I know some of you probably would too. But this issue on short term, I don't think it's important to our neighborhood in Franklin. So I do thank the council and the administration for their effort, because I know you're working on one, and I think it's proven that you're delaying and taking your time on how that's going to fit, how it's going to be enforced. If you... If we do allow the number of short-term rentals to grow, you will have an increase burden on the police department, for nuisance causes. It's happened in most communities, and it will happen in New Franklin. So I was looking at the comprehensive plan today, and I noticed under quality of life that it's number one thing, so the small-town feel, cultivate relationships with neighbors, which our neighborhood on West Reservoir, that's how most of us feel, and there's a lot of us here today. So we do not want a proliferation of hotels, which is what they are, in our neighborhood in which investors are using their house as commercial property and subordinating the lifestyle of the property owners who live in their homes and have spent years investing in it. The current framework forces us to tolerate the guests that are on vacation, so the commercial property investors can maximize their profits. And many of us work from home while the vacationers are staying very late. Even a bed and breakfast in the zoning code requires a conditional permit. And we would rather have an Airbnb... We'd rather have a bed and breakfast than an Airbnb because the homeowner is living there and supervising the guests. So at least it should be a conditional permit on a short-term run. I know if there was a ballot measure in New Franklin for or against residential property as a short-term rental, 80% or more would say don't want it. I've been visiting the neighbors. You might have gotten emails, educating the citizens about it. There are some areas that I think an Airbnb may not be disruptive to the neighborhood. Mostly one that abuts a commercial area, maybe perhaps 50 feet from another property, but certainly not five feet from another property like my neighbor is dealing with. So as you know, many towns and villages have prioritized people that live in their homes, and they're excluding short-term rentals from their cities, at least residential zoning areas, including Jackson Township, Silver Lake, Bay Village, to name a few. If we don't ban a home together, the next best thing would be a conditional permit process, which I think is the path we can follow. In each request, I would request that if a residential property is advocating to turn theirs into a commercial property, that it go before a variance board, that nearby neighbors are notified and invited to attend the hearing, and then the variance board makes a decision, given the density of the neighborhood and the harmony like we do on the zoning process for variances, and somebody must have put a fence in or something like that. So finally, these existing hotels should not be grandfathered in when the ordinance is passed. And the ordinance should restrict one hotel per 100 yards, like Coventry Township did. And then, of course, if there's multiple violations, there should be a process where that permit is rescinded for things like noise, number of guests, parking, to name a few.
We're running a year and a half.
Yeah, thank you.
Time is... You got it, yeah.
Nothing. Actually, that was the end of my statement. I'll read you from the mayor of Bay Village, what he said when he submitted to Senate Bill 104, that they have to allow for tithing rentals for less than 29 days. He said, "These short-term rentals turn residential homes suddenly into hotels and motels without the normal zoning process. When someone buys a home in Bay Village, they do not expect to live next to a hotel or motel." That is exactly what's happening literally overnight. So I'll give this to Mayor Adamson, that's from Pier in Bay Village. That was submitted to the Senate.
Thank you, council. See enough? We'll close public comment, and we move on to our first reading. This is resolution 25R-43, go.
I'm going to do that second.
Yeah, resolution 25R-43.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Montrose Auto Group for the purchase of a 2025 Dodge Durango Pursuit V6 SUV for the fire department and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to waive this three reading rule for resolution number 25R-43.
Second. Say the first and the second.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to pass resolution number 25R-43.
Say the first and the second.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Resolution passes, seven zero. Ordinance 25003, this rule. I would like to request more time. Time is... Requesting, time is granted. Resolution 25R-39.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with OHM advisors for the design of the Sisler Park Trail project and declaring an emergency.
That was before community development committee, and we request time. Time requested, time was granted. Yes, we move on to our third power development meeting. Mayor's report.
Thank you. All right, a bunch of thanks. First of all, we had a very enjoyable employee luncheon today. Our neighbors over here at the New Franklin Global Church were kind enough to host it. And our council was kind enough to provide it. And I know it was very much appreciated. It's a good morale-building kind of thing, and it's a wonderful thing to see all the departments together like that. And we're very proud of all of them as well. And the folks are... We're blessed out here. We got people that care about what they're doing, but it was nice seeing them and working together, breaking bread together. So we appreciate that. The Tudor barbecue is tomorrow night. Many of you have signed up. And it's really... It's probably too late for tickets, but if you really want to come, call up here, we'll probably find somebody to squeeze in. But that's a wonderful night, too, and the Tudor houses. You know, we have 11 or 12 events out there every year, and this event, this fundraiser provides the funding for about half of that expense of us. And I'm happy to say that we operate in black as far as all of our community activities over at the Tudor House. We don't have to... We don't expend any government or tax funding for anything we do over there. It's all supported either through the fundraiser or through our sponsors. And so it's turned into the variance event center. So that's tomorrow night. All right, we had a conversation, and we're not the only ones, relative to First Energy and the power outages. And as you know, they're taking a hard look at that all the way across the state. I had a conversation, reached out to Amy Hopkins, who is our First Energy representative. She's very approachable. And if we don't already have contact information on the website, we'll make sure it's there. She invites contact from residents, not just from council members and elected officials. She indicated, and there are those who wouldn't necessarily would accept that these are the real reasons, but I guess the notes I have from that conversation is that there's three substations in play. There's Portage Lakes, Rex Hill, and then Estilla. They have problems with trees, and the trees fall, that leads to a lot of the outages. She mentioned that some municipality has had ordinances requiring trees to be cut. And we talked about that when we were talking about, you know, up there on that little island out there. And there are some cities that have that. We may want to revisit that. Apparently, that's a big help to First Energy. If there's overhanging branches coming over the wires, if they don't take it down, we can take it down, we can charge it. So we may want to give us some thought to that. I just... These are my notes. And I didn't say this, I just wrote this stuff down. There's an osprey nest on Manchester Road. And apparently, you know, that can be a factor. So, all right. Heat causes switching and overloading on substations. They do need updated equipment to address the problems. And what she would like to do is see if she could meet with our council president and our fourth ward councilperson. She'd be happy to come here and do that, if we can set up a time that's convenient to have some further discussion. And, you know, I communicated to her that our fourth ward councilperson has suffered. So he's right there in the district, and that's really where most of these are made in practice. So I'll get you that information, and we'll try to set something up there. Okay, let's see. The auction of the... The one to auction off the 2011, and we took another... I'm having another conversation with the law director, looked again at the statute, and I want to be sure we're able to do it that way. We can do online auctions. We've done it in the past at Skipco, but the statute's a little bit... It's somewhat unclear about that. And so I want to make sure before we go in that direction. So that's why I hadn't brought that before today. That vehicle's not going anywhere, right? Literally?
No, sir.
All right. Okay, let's see. This, I think, is a little different, and I had that talk with Chief Bickett. We got something from the Department of Commerce and Division of Liquor Control. All Class C and D retail permits will expire on October 1st of 2025. Every retail permit holder must file an online renewal application. And revised Code 4303271 provides that legislative authority has a right to object to the renewal. But to register a valid objection, we have to pass a resolution that specifies the problems. I know, I don't remember dealing with this as a blanket before. But I know that we deal with it every time there's a transfer. We have an opportunity to object to the transfer if we choose to. In any event, they do provide... There's a source for us to get a list of all the permit holders in our jurisdiction. So Chief Bickett is doing that. He's going to forward that to me. I'll get that to all of you. I will tell you that Chief Bickett, at this point, said he wasn't aware of any particular facility or permit that has been so problematic that we'd want to object. But if we want to do it, we have to do it by September 2nd. So I'll get that list to you before the next meeting. And then at the next meeting, we really don't... We're really not called upon to take any action, but I may ask for a motion or whatever, if, you know, if anybody... Some way, we'll document the fact that we've addressed it and give them, council, an opportunity if they think there's a permit that we think should be objected to. All right, let's see. Hey, we met with Maschusinski and A.J. Allen from our municipal advisors, who did a presentation a while back, and the process, the next step is really the forecast. And they're prepared to do that, but as we talk, there's certainly some uncertainties right now in terms of projecting over the next, not just the next five years, but the next year as well. There was some discussion about it from the legislature, from the Ohio Legislature, to do away with inside millage, which would have taken a million dollars away from the city and from us. We run on about a $12 or $13 million budget. And I will tell you, it may sound self-serving, but it's the truth. There's no fat here. We're a service industry, and most of what is done here is, you know, paying for the police, the fire, the service guys, the paving, et cetera, et cetera. A million dollars would be a big hit. That was withdrawn, but it may come back. You're aware that there's some discussion about trying to get a ballot measure and do away property taxes altogether, which would be fatal in a sense to pretty much every city. You know, it would take seven or eight million dollars away from a $12 million budget. And so we hope there's some other way to address property taxes, but doing away with them altogether, I don't think that's true. But in any event, and then we have the fire levy that'll be up in November. And the fire levy right now brings in about $2.2 million. It costs about $3 million, with about $3.3 million to run our fire department. Every five years, that levy expires. And what we've done, every fifth year, we've asked the voters to approve a replacement. And then that replacement ups the tax. It starts now again at the current tax valuation. And so the council has approved to put that on the ballot in November. The projection for a $200,000 house is about an extra $148 a year. So we hope we have support for that. But what we've asked them to do is give us a projection of either or. What happens if those funds aren't available? What happens if it doesn't pass and we don't have the $2 million? What happens next? So they put that together very nicely, and they'd like to present that to council at the next council meeting, if we could. So we'll have the big offer at 6:00 at the next council meeting. All right, let's see, we're almost there. We had a, I thought, a really positive, productive meeting with the steering committee for the state route 619. As you know, we received a planning grant from AMAT to engage a consultant to talk to the public about what we'd like to see. We know that the Y and I development appears it's going to go forward. That's really all on the east side of the channel, on 619. And the next question becomes, what about the west side? What can we do to enhance that, make that more attractive? Sidewalks, multi-use trails, they care some of the traffic problems. And so they concluded their report, and we had, as I said, I think, really a very positive, productive meeting. And they would like, and the OHM would like to present those findings. The community survey, by the way, had, I think, a little bit over 250 responses. And half of those responses came from people who were in that corridor. So I think we really got a good flavor. So I think we really got a good flavor, and the kind of things that they wanted are what's incorporated into their report. So they're going to finalize that, and they'd like to come to the first meeting in September and present that to council as well. Because at some point then, the next question becomes, is this something we're interested in doing? And if we are, then we start chasing money. And there's funds out there, and we've been blessed in terms of being able to find federal and state money for a lot of projects. And we think those funds are there for this type of project as well. So that'll be the first meeting in September. And I will tell you that we had the vote on the TIF legislation was three yes, two no, and two abstentions. And then a question was raised whether or not, do you have to have four yeses to pass legislation? We referred that to our law director. He found some amazing case law that's still good. I say amazing in the sense because it's the ninth district case, which is our district, and that's supported by an 1888 Ohio Supreme Court case. And so that's pretty solid. That says that what happens with an ascension, an ascension then is counted with whatever the majority vote was. So in this case, those ascensions, that ascensions become, along with the yes votes, five yes votes. And so, but to be certain, because our law director is also part of the law firm, his law firm was absorbed by the law firm that's directed, that the attorney for the wireline is a member of, it was suggested that we get outside, get a second look at that. And we've retained Jason Butterworth from Brennan Man, a diamond, another very strong Akron law firm, and referred that over to him. And he did, he indicated, we did confirm, those cases are good law. Nothing further from us on the vote, we agree with Rexel. So the result there is that all that legislation is probably going to pass. All right. And then, I believe, as far as short-term rentals, you're probably going to talk about that. Or maybe you are. But I'll just say personally on this, this is something that's been discussed in the city in the past. And it's, we came close several years ago. And then the Ohio Legislature got involved and indicated that they were going to prohibit cities from passing any legislation that could restrict these short-term rentals. And that folds it into a category of what's, challenges to what's called home rule. In other words, when does a city, now, we're a charter city, so we have more authority, you know, more flexibility to do things. If you're not a charter city, whatever's in the Ohio Revised Code, that's the law. But as a charter city, you can deviate from that. You can't run wide, but you can deviate, there's areas that you can deviate. And so what happened a few years ago was a suggestion that they were going to override that. Municipalities argued, wait a minute, this is a violation of home rule. We put the brakes on the legislation, we waited for further guidance. And now it's come back up again, and I'll shut up here in a second and let council talk about, you know, what they're doing with these proposed, with the proposed legislation. But once again, the Ohio Legislature, as I'm sure you know, if you guys are paying attention, they've got more legislation on deck that could, I've looked at it, it wouldn't prohibit municipalities from any regulation, but it does usurp some of the authority of the municipality as to how they can regulate and the extent of those regulations. And then what's likely to follow is, you know, litigation. Eventually, of course, we'll probably end up back in the courts again, because you know, you know, these investors are going to end up challenging it. So that's sort of the history in the background. I'm not running again, so I'm not looking for votes, but I will tell you, I'm sympathetic to the situation.
Thank you.
I mean, I've lived out here my whole life, too. And I get, and so, and I don't speak for council a lot, but I think there's a sense that people care about this, and it's, you know, there's a balance to, we need, you know, we need to fine-tune it for sure. So, okay, that's all I have. Thanks.
On to your work.
Just a few things. After the last meeting, of course, you received your alternative tax budget, which is the starting document for the 2026 budget. I just kind of wanted to point out a couple things. We did go over this, of course, with all the departments and the mayor, but because we have that 5.75 levy that is going to fall off, and that we don't know until after November about the new 5.75, the budget itself had to be done as if that is not there. So those numbers will look different, especially for the fire department. So I kind of wanted to bring you up to speed on that. And the fire department knows about that, and we know that once it passes, if we're going to be positive, then, of course, we will be changing that, and the budget will be more in line with what it would be normally. So I just kind of wanted to give you a heads up for that. So it's a little bit different than you would normally see just because of that fact, and that's how we have to do it. A couple other things, as most of you know, you saw the auditors, they're here. So they've been working on our audit for a while because they do a lot of it remotely. But now they're in, and they come, and they stay a day, and then they go, and they're done for the week, they're coming back on Monday. So it's kind of an on and off thing where they come in and have a pool of things that can't easily be sent to them electronically, like, for example, the bank statements and the bank reconciliations for all year. It can just be a mess to try and stand and send all that stuff. So they're here, and we're working with them on and off, so you'll see them in and out. There's four people that were here today. Lastly, some more letters went out from Rita for anybody that missed one of their filings. You might get a letter for 2023, 24, it could be, could go back, it depends. At certain points of the year, Rita gets copies of the state taxes and the federal taxes. So they, you know, figure out if somebody owes anything or if they haven't filed, and those kinds of things. If you get a letter, this is for Rita, if you get a letter and it's got penalty notices and you get, you know, you get in a bind, please come see me, because we can help you with that. I can't get rid of the tax, but I can certainly help you out with penalties and interest and get your, and help you to get your account back in line so that you don't have to worry about it. Because some people ignore the letters, and then they, and then they send you a summons to go to court. And I can even help you when it gets that far. Can't get rid of the court fees, because when you've been, at that point, I, there's only so much I can do. But we still have helped people in that instance that just, you know, set the letters aside and didn't pay attention to. So please, if you have a problem, or if you find that you have a penalty and you did what you're supposed to do, or you're not sure what's wrong with your account, please come see me, because we can help you on this end, and we're happy to do it.
That's all.
Thank you.
We have your business.
Anybody want to go before I begin?
No, you have to go first.
So I want to piggyback off the mayor's comments about the, at least the court thing, is that I've had a couple phone calls with Urb, and I've had some phone calls with Greg and fellow councilmen, Styles as well, is that the whole delay in this is that this will end up in court. You know, there's a lot of people, a lot of money riding on this. It's financially feasible, economically worthwhile to risk going to court over this issue. So thankfully, Urb has had a lot of experience with this issue in other municipalities, so he's able to craft or legally guide us in crafting legislation that firstly, won't go to courts and get shot down, because if we go to court and lose, that's a lot of time, money, and resources that we will waste. So we're trying to prevent that waste and do it right the first time. And he's taken a good look on it. I've had some conversations with him. I've had some conversations with Eric and Greg as well. So it's really getting nitty-gritty in the details, and again, I'm just going to thank his expertise on it. That's all I have on short-term rentals at least, so I don't want to be kicking the can down the road, but I really don't want to see the city of Franklin going to court over an issue and then having us to waste our time to make these regulations and help protect the constituents and our people, especially in the lakes where it seems to be the most problematic issue, and afford to be thrown out and spend a bunch of money and time doing that, or we just be thrown aside by a gavel. So we're trying to do it right the first time. And the more I listen to him speak, the more points he brings up, and the more stuff I worry about how the court system works, at least on issues like this. It was very interesting, and, you know, it's good that he's been able to be on both sides, at least with other municipalities, on issues like that. I would like to say that the Tudor House, we were rocking out with our one and only Mr. Brian Listick. He's a sign organist, I didn't even note that. He's pretty, and he's going to Spotify, which is pretty cool. It's going to be front-page news. But it's always fun. It was really cool. He had people up on their feet dancing around. And the last thing is, is that it's fellow councilman Eric Styles' birthday today, which is really cool. Isn't that awesome?
No better way than this, buddy?
Yeah, I know no reservation, sincere council. I can't think of a better day myself. But that's all I have.
All right. Any other old business?
Mr. Roman, can I ask, timeline-wise, maybe two weeks, maybe 30 days, you still think you're going to have something to present?
He said he's going to be the memo, is what I spoke to, I had a memo about the initial phase, but he said that he was on vacation for a little bit, so that might have been a little bit of a delay.
Okay.
But I can't give a timeline, because he said he's still with us.
All right. And I didn't know if you, I talked with him today also, relative to that. So I know he's going to be working on it and trying to maybe incorporate some things into the draft that you guys put together, which is a good first draft. So from the city's perspective, I'm hopeful that we'll have something in September sometime. If we're going to adopt something, it would make sense to try to do that at least maybe no later than that first meeting in October. I think we're going to want to get in front of whatever might happen in Columbus. And timeline there, I think we're comfortable if we get the first part of October.
Yeah. Just the biggest issue is that if we revoke someone's right to have a short-term rental, it's going to end up in court. It's financially worthwhile to end up in court for those investors. So it's trying to prevent something from happening that we know will happen. It's a game fear.
Any other old business?
I have some. I wanted to invite everyone to the farmer's market every Thursday, 3 until 7. Delicious food. And I also want to remind everyone that can to donate to the Barbitchon Ministries, Harvest for Humble, Akron Canton Food Bank, or any of the food banks around. There are a lot of people that really need that, and they can buy so much more than we can. Your donation will really buy twice as much as you can go out and buy yourself, and it's a very worthy call.
Chief, where is the farmer's market?
Oh, it's right here, right straight. Thank you, Greg. And we have delicious popcorn.
Yeah, very.
Yes. And we don't charge for it. It's absolutely free. And they say nothing's free. We've got one thing.
Any other old business? I have an FE issue on there, but thanks for bringing it up, Mayor. Any new business?
I'd just like to take a minute to thank everyone for coming to the council meeting. It's a beautiful night out, I know you'd rather be out in the lake, but your guys' input and coming in here really does help us, and I think I speak for us all when we say that. I appreciate you coming in. Is everybody here for short-term rentals? Very good. Thank you.
Hey, look, they're calling in.
Last night, I watched the video of the Village of Clinton's council meeting, and as part of their council meeting, they have, the department heads or the department representatives give a report of the past month, whatever's going on in their business. For the police report, Sergeant Sam Pelly of the New Franklin Police Department was there, and he gave the report of incidents, number of this, number of that, et cetera. He also answered questions that council had from previous meeting and was able to provide them with good information. Sergeant Sam Pelly was very professional. He spoke well, he answered their questions, he gave great information. He truly represented the New Franklin Police Department and the city of New Franklin very well. I was very impressed with his five minutes up there talking. So I just wanted to, you know, say a little something.
And while you're on the topic of safety forces.
See? Yeah, I make everything happen.
Chief Leslie, I was going to go grab this, and I'm going to write about it, but I hadn't had a chance to yet. Yeah. I didn't prep you yet, you know, I don't know if you have any notes or any records with you, but can you speak a little bit about it?
Yeah, I don't, but we were awarded in, for June, we were awarded the, through Suma Hospitals, the stroke team of the month. We had the fastest response from time we were called for a stroke till the time they were actually in the stroke suite at the hospital, getting thrombolytics and working on getting the, getting the stroke taken care of. It was 53 minutes from us here. And normally, the national standard, they want it in less than 90. So we were well within, well, I mean, 53 minutes, and that's going against all of the other EMS units that transport to Suma for strokes.
Countywide at least, right? Pardon me? Countywide at least?
Oh, yes, yeah. And even outside the county, I mean, like Chippewa Township and that also transport, because they're, they're a, Akron, Cleveland County Governor in general, and Suma Akron City are two of the stroke facilities in this area, regional for this area. So it's pretty good. You know, we, our biggest hindrance in time is usually the transport time, because, you know, we sit down here at the bottom end of the county, and it takes us a little while, depending on traffic, to get to Akron City Hospital. But the guys were able to identify the stroke, notify the team, they were there by the time they were transported, and they were actually getting definitive care for their stroke within 53 minutes of the time they called us for assistance. So that's really good.
That's not the first time you've come to us.
No, uh-uh, no.
I'm going to say, that's the reason we need the levy, because you want the best, the fastest, and I also say the cheapest, because I have to look at them. And that's what we have, I'm going to tell you. And you love it, when you walk in and say, don't worry, I'm going to handle this. You know you will. And you can't hide that.
And part of this timing is, while they're in transit to the hospital, the EMS people, they're prepping the patient, so that when they do get to the hospital, that patient is able to go in and get things going immediately. So sort of training that they receive, and it, you know, it makes a difference, because they're not just riding back there and saying, everything will be fine.
Yes, yeah.
They're prepping the patient.
Yeah, we have specific protocols that we go through once we've notified them for the patient, including, it varies, the protocol varies obviously by the nature of the stroke or where the, you know, where they think the stroke's at. But yes, up until, including medications and that, that we can prep them so that they bypass the emergency room and go straight to the stroke suite for care. We don't even, we don't even stop in the emergency room.
Do you remember who was on that team?
It was Lieutenant Wagner, um...
Arthur Weisman and Brian Hall.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yeah, and again, that's the constant training that the fire department is going through. It's not just sitting around playing cards, waiting for a call to come in, but it's just constant training, constant reinforcement of their training. And we do that with the police department, too. The police department is going through all kinds of training all the time, so they're prepared when something happens. And, you know, this award is just an example of that training that goes on. Congratulations to you, congratulations to the entire team, and of course, us three gentlemen.
Hello, Chief. Any other new business? Okay, I want to bring up, I know we had some, there's social media, there's an issue that come up about the potential flag. We had a gentleman in town that put a lot of effort into generating the flag and stuff. I didn't know, I figured I could at least bring it up and have some discussion with council, if that's something we wanted in your team, or if we're not having a city flag. I know if we have a city flag, then we got to erect some additional holes, so we have a state flag and a city flag. Anybody see anything on there, or does anybody have any thoughts as to if you want to entertain the idea of a flag? I mean, myself, I just think that if we want to go that route, it should be a community effort.
I do, too. I agree. And we talked about that, the pictures that they did have, they were nice, but it would be nice to have something like this that actually identifies us, or at least I think that's what people would want. I think that's what people would want. And I just think it should be a community endeavor.
I believe there should be approximately 100 cities inside of Ohio that have their own city flags.
So is that something, so like, could we even get a vote for a, a poll?
No, I would, I would see it being, if we do decide to go that route, it'd be something that would get a lot of community engagement if it comes up, if it's on, that everybody would like. I don't even know if you guys or the city wants to go that route, I just figured we'd at least bring it up. And if we don't want that, well, that's fine, we do, that's another discussion.
Spend a lot of money doing that, I'm worried about them scratching the durango when this new levy's coming.
We can, we can, we visit us ahead of time and follow that along.
I, I think a flag would be a great idea. I think something that we can identify ourselves with, have, have, stick in our back window instead of the Palm Tree in the moon for South Carolina. You know, we, we have a detail that identifies New Franklin. And I agree, I think it should be a community thing. I appreciate the gentleman getting the ball rolling with this. But, you know, we, we have the high school, we have the PLCC with their departments that could work together, we could, you know, have people submit ideas and thoughts and, like you mentioned, more community input and, and let, you know, let the community vote on it and, and see. And if we don't agree with our bill, we just say, nah, we're not going to do it.
Yeah, that's something you can maybe bring up in another meeting, but just, I just want to plan to see if you guys want to think about that and see what it is. No other, your business? Move on to our second round of public comments. You guys have anything you'd like to ask questions, comment on that you've seen already?
I'd like to just follow up a little bit. I don't want to be redundant with the research and talk about, Mr. Shoverman does work for other municipalities, I mean, County Township and perhaps others, so he's got exposure to that. But how about the communities that have prohibited short-term rentals in there, like Jackson Township, Silver Lake, Bay Village? I'm happy to call council over there unless you guys have already done that. It doesn't make sense to pay an attorney on the meter to go do that research for you. So have you guys reached out to those cities, council people?
I, Mr. Shoverman spoke with other attorneys in this field of work within our discussion that he knows of the issues at the field with the legislation because I, I know some of them are already in court, I believe, so.
Well, I'll reach out to council rep and those three. When I find back, I'll share with you three what, what they learned. So, and then I know that Avon Lake, my neighbor over here noticed that Avon Lake just put a moratorium on short-term rentals, while they're evaluating their regulation. I'll put that out there for someone to consider, at least stop the bleeding while we figure out whether to put an attorney in on it, but can you imagine for that? And then lastly, given the zoning code does not allow for a commercial property in a residential zone part of, part three, I guess if we're worried about suing, somebody could turn their house into an auto repair place, which is permitted, so why would this conditional, why would this commercial venture that's not permitted in residential areas? That's what they've done, they've turned a residential property into a commercial property. Commercial properties aren't permitted. So I wouldn't see that any different really than somebody converting their house into an auto repair and being worried about whether that person's going to sue the city or council on it. So I don't need the answer, I'm just putting that in perspective about that.
That seems like the whole argument of course is, is that, is this just like, you're Ohio renter property, the long-term renters, you know, what's the difference between a long-term person staying there for a month and someone staying there for a weekend? That's, I don't know, that's the argument.
I don't think most of us have a problem with the 30-day rental because they, they would, they would assimilate themselves in the neighborhood. People don't have an issue with full-time rentals. It's the weekend rentals that are the more, that are more problematic.
Yeah, that's just the issue that ends up in court usually. This is the definition of arguments usually. The definitions of the argument.
I don't know if any of the other neighbors in the discussion.
I would just like to say that.
Any of your neighbors?
Jody Mackey, 4073 Milton Avenue.
Thank you.
In February of 2022, I was here on this issue. I don't know if you remember, but I was. And I was kind of given the same things that you're saying tonight. Push back, go look at it. And I kept saying, because at the time, the House bill had been presented by a member of the House, for Matt Tribula, that owns properties and the real, hospitality, all of the, you know, there's big people behind it in Columbus. I get it. Nothing's happened. I'm not even sure it came out of committee.
Didn't get out of the House or anything.
And now the Senate bill, it, it, something happened in May, but nothing's happening. So my thing is, why can't we get ahead of it? In a way, instead of just letting, you know, even that a prospective person that might be doing it would recognize New Franklin is on this. And right now, it's not coming off that way. What, what is New Franklin doing since 2022, February to now? I'm, I'm, I'm wondering. I know that I've been true, but I'm, I'm wondering what you guys have done. So I, I hate, I understand the law thing, but nothing's happening down there. So years are going by where we, but there's no regulation. What?
I, I think earlier in the meeting, the mayor suggested that we have this in place by October so we could be ahead of any legislation. So the, the thought process is that we're going to try to have at the first meeting in September, we're going to try to have the resolution in place for us to review and vote on and then have it in place here in the city by October of this year.
Yeah, the purpose of this resolution that we're trying to craft is to get ahead of it. We're not stalling, we're trying to get ahead of it. So the issue is, and I'm saying is that if we just throw it out there, it goes to court, it's going to be gone in a month. And then you have no legislation again. So it's no point of me sitting up here and throwing something out there just for us to go pay to fight it in court and then it be gone. I'm trying to do something that's actually impactful this time.
To kind of echo on with Mr. Cass, Mr. Cass, I believe you were on the first round of the board, and I suppose, especially Cass myself and Mr. Gango, we had handful of meetings with the attorneys and stuff, and we were getting, we were seeing a lot of resistance to do something. I think we're closer now than we have been as far as getting something put together and actually put in place. So we, we have made progress. And that's basically off this, this latest initiative to try to make some sort of an action to correct any issues. Thank you. Anybody else that, any comments? So now we'll close the public comment. Do we have a need for a detective session? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Also, we will first and second.
Mr. Todd?
Yes.
Mrs. Shager?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Styles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Armson?
Yes.